... United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know why I still record everything about races.
Sam, I probably missed something to handle somebody on Facebook doing. How do you say that?
Mr. Avallia, Commissioner Story.
President.
Commissioner Birkin.
President.
Commissioner Mesus.
President.
Mayor Condon.
I really improve a match.
I hope you'll see him to pass it. The last register schedule meeting will need a motion to play the redoing of those except ministers present. We'll need a motion.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Do you have a property report, Commissioner Birkin?
One thing I had tonight was a discussion of rural engineering cost for these man line replacement. That's a deal from McKinsey to foundation. The fine cost would be at forty-seven thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Would you like to make a motion to go forward with that project?
That's not a part.
That's just the engineering part. That's not a problem. Y'all want any notes?
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Speaking of improvements, Commissioner Mesus.
Believe it or not.
All the work you've gotten down to the wax, not the two. Congratulations on North Main.
It's too smooth. People are complaining it's too smooth.
I call it all every day. Teddy White's wonderful.
It is wonderful.
I mean, I know you've been 24/7, Mr. President. Thank you. Public Affairs safety report, Commissioner Story.
I got a couple of purchase orders. One is for ammo. Three cases of 223 ammo, one hundred and ninety-four, thirty-five. Comes to five hundred and eighty-three and five. Two cases of 5.56 ammo, one fifty-six, eighty. Comes to three thirteen, sixty. Fifty rounds of 223 training rounds, seventy-six each. Comes to thirty-eight dollars, shipping twelve dollars. And it's nine hundred and forty-six, sixty-five, and it comes from Kessler Foods Supply in Jeffersonville, Indiana. I make a motion to accept that.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
The next purchase order I have is for Narcan nasal spray. That's what they give for drugs. And a lot of it is to protect us. It's very expensive. Twelve, we've got twelve cases, comes to seventy-five dollars a case, nine hundred dollars for the total of the Narcan. I make a motion to accept that.
Just a word about Narcan. Narcan is an essential situation that somebody overdoses on opioids, the first responder uses a Narcan as a spray, nasal spray, and it brings the people out of their home of state and heading toward death. We come to a situation where Narcan is becoming a crisis to this city because, you know, we have to have it. We're spending nine hundred dollars on a situation that we're going to repeatedly and repeatedly and repeatedly use over and over and over. So it's just suggesting the federal government has some grant program that they've been using and trying to get more Narcan in at affordable price, but it's become a situation with the city that Narcan is becoming unaffordable. So we're going to have to look to a different avenue.
And it's not only the drug addicts, it's for the police officers too. If they get addicted, not addicted, but ingested while they're on a case or something, they can use it too.
But we're also having the first responders in general use them, right? Not only the police officers.
Part department does.
Yeah.
The police officers, there's two different kinds. The part department is cheaper. They put it together to use it. This is a nasal spray.
Yes.
It's a lot faster than what the part department.
But what I'm going to make a point is that we're headed for a crisis. It's a point for the city, and it's not only Benton, it's your nationwide problem. Small municipalities like we have cannot keep on supporting to buy Narcan. It's going to be that point.
Something got to happen. It's just got to happen.
Go ahead. You made a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept to buy Narcan for nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Last thing I got, the city of Benton, police department would like to donate the following vehicle to the airport. Two thousand and eleven Chevrolet Impala. It's got the radials, it's got everything out of the stripes or off of it. Only thing it's got is a spotlight. Would the airport be willing to take this as a donation? Keep my guy in question. I mean, I'll make a motion that you might have to.
I think for right now, I think it's a great idea because there is going to be a coal that we have burning out of there.
Of course not.
For transportation, so better to have something than nothing.
It's not much, believe me. It's more out, there's nowhere in it, but it'll do till we can come up with something else. I make a motion to accept giving that car to the airport.
Second.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
It's so bad they didn't want to take it in on trade.
Well, like I said, it's something for nothing. We'll just tell the people that use it, they can only drive it in Benton.
That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Public Affairs report, Commissioner Gervais.
We did payroll the last year. We need to get the money from fifteen.
Somebody to make a motion to extend. Someone needs to make a motion to continue this meeting at the end tonight to nine fifteen on Friday morning for the naming of bills, is that correct? For the naming of bills. I make a motion that we extend until Friday night to continue the voting. So approve of bills.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Okay, any things in the city turning up?
No other things in my mayor.
On the public affairs, the uptick that we had this past Saturday, we had the festival of life in Benton, and it was phenomenal. It's a pride factor to do something like this. The work that went into this is incredible. We had, we're lucky to have Rachel Garth, who's our community relations director. Thank you, Rachel. Rachel masterminded the festival of life. And she has been helping elves. One male elf, which is kind of rare, it seems like, is Bart Bradley. He did a lot of hands-on, and believe me, there was a lot of people that worked, but this is people under Rachel's direction. And then Kay Condriss and Dixie Andrews and Teresa Banks were the other elves that helped. Got a great turnout. Thank God was there. And we took, Jonathan Walters took the photos. Each person received a ticket for a photo, and they can retrieve that back on the internet, right?
Yeah.
It was great. Ben Clements provided horse and buggy rides with kids. A dog suit was nice, you know?
And Larry Walden. I don't want to leave him off.
Who's there?
Larry Walden.
Larry Walden.
Mm-hmm.
And it was phenomenal. We had a great turnout again. It was great for a small town. The lights and the decorations will be up until probably into the month of January.
Yes.
On the other.
We've been asked by the county of everything down by service yet.
Okay. I don't know why they asked that besides that. We've had a situation with the county, and we're working with them hand in fist. Rachel came up with this idea here, and to me, it's an idea of the decade. It's actually, the county courthouse was built in eighteen seventy-five, and it'll be coming done in 2020, that's a hundred and forty-five years. That county courthouse has touched the lives of literally hundreds of thousands of people in a hundred and forty-five years. Do they admit? It's your courthouse. The courthouse will be demolished probably the first part of the year. So Rachel came up with the commemorative snowflake with a drone photo of the courthouse and the decorations in front of this chair. And the initial order of what, three hundred is gone. I mean, it went off at ten, I actually bought twenty. We're going to give these to our cousins and people in our family for Christmas gift. We hung this on our tree last night, and it's a, the glistening and the prism coming through this plastic is incredible. And it highlights the courthouse. So you can buy these, it's five dollars, and it's a commemorative snowflake of the courthouse. It's history in the making. They're available at the City Hall here. The proceeds goes toward the...
They go straight back into the community event fund.
So as far as making a profit, it's a back pocket. We're doing this to reinvest into the community, and you can contact Rachel if you'd like to have one. She's going to put it in second order. And I'm confident that as time goes on, we'll be putting in more orders because when the courthouse comes down, it's going to be, it's going to be a really strange, eerie situation with that thing flattened out, and then the rebuilding process is going to take time. It's going to be probably a two-year project. It's a part of Benton that's a historic part, and it's sad to see it go, and it's happy to see something else coming up. So we're going to, we aren't going to replace it. The county's going to replace it. Hats off to Commissioner Mesus. He's going to have his hands full with traffic direction and traffic flow. Since the first responder giggle over there, he's going to have his hands full with directing traffic. And something strange happened. They were directing traffic to the square off of 57 for some reconstruction or construction problems last week, and...
Semi-over time.
The inner part of the square was closed down because we were decorating the square. And the tandem trucks, FedEx has the tandem type trucks, could hardly make it around the square. At the same time, the North Main is being marked, and it's chaotic. So I just don't know what to tell you for the next two years, except I would take some alternate routes, you know, around the square. But that's just, that's growing things. I mean, City of St. Louis is doing eight billion dollars worth of construction down by the stadium, and we're getting through their situation, so I'm sure we can. But anyway, Rachel, thank you. I mean, it was just a festive event. I didn't hear an untiring work from anybody, and the kids were, it's all about the citizens and kids, and the kids here love Santa Claus, so that was great. Evening also loves Santa Claus. Good fix for it. Okay, part B, a discussion approval of the map that they proposed. David, you want to say something about the map there?
I addressed that. That zoning map, that about three years ago, the city paid ten thousand dollars for a zoning map, enterprise zone map, and a TIF map. Click on this for color coding and everything. It's really helpful. We've got the new I-57 enterprise zone coming up January one. It's expanded its coverage. It's got a bigger area now. Nothing's really shaking, it's all grown. And it's going to be really difficult to figure out whether you're in the enterprise zone or not, because if it's not marked, you've just got to kind of guess at it. I talked to Victor Shockley, good city engineer there, Rodney Potts' firm, and he's got a proposal there to add to it with some shake files that she has available to him, and we really need to get that updated. And I guess potentially, we might be able to, you know, share it with some other communities like West Frankfurt or West City if they want to, you know, pay into this thing. We've got initial ten thousand dollars invested three years ago, so I think this is another three thousand updated. We can have two annexations, one on Sidovacant Street, and another one off of Sidovacant Street. They'll ask for you to, so you've updated, and so we're going to do it. I recommend this council approve that, or otherwise, we're going to just be guessing where we're at.
Any discussion? Questions?
We had it done, what, you said?
About three years ago. Johnny did it, and this will be out there and everything. It's really handy. It really is. It's different than trying to look at this, you know, eight and a half by twelve inch piece of paper and zooming in there to see if this little property is really right there. It's a really nice thing to have. Be great to put that thing on the internet if we can figure out an easy way that's feasible to do that, because otherwise, you get all these calls, what is this zone? What, you know, is this in the enterprise zone? And people can do that on their own, or they can call me, and I'll figure it out for them whatever it is to do. In places like in Florida, they're going, well, we've tried to find your zoning map online where other cities have, and you don't have one. Figure it out for you right here.
As far as that proposal with the PDF map, I'm going to put it on your website.
Okay, good.
You mentioned other communities possibly, getting other communities to buy into this.
It'd be nice.
What's the, is that a, what's the chance of them?
I haven't talked to them. You know, here's the deal too. Starting January one, we got this new enterprise zone, it's I-57. They're supposed to have an enterprise zone administrator for the town. I don't know who that's going to be. Somehow I ended up being the enterprise zone for Benton here. So I don't think it'd be fair for the Benton guy to figure it out West Frankfurt or West City, because, you know, I don't know nothing about streets down there, so we need to sit down and figure out who's going to do what, because there's a lot involved, signed people up. You've been through that.
Couple times.
Signed up with the part of revenue up there and whatnot. So I'm going to set up a meeting this month, but at five o'clock before a county board meeting, if somebody shows up. Last time, it was the mayor and county chairman showed up, and I was there, so they pointed me the enterprise one. Rachel's already turned it down. She was told it wasn't worth her time to do that for nothing, you know? Is that true? Didn't John Gully tell you that, like, where you do, don't do that? I've been doing it. It's not too bad, and I enjoy it, but, you know, I don't think they figured out West City and Frankfurt, and those guys are better situated to do that, so we'll just have to figure out a plan for them. That's the only thing I can think of. But I guess if this thing's going to be on our map, then they can just go to our map and look at this stuff, you know? But we're putting the bill for everything here, it seems like. Somebody needs to step up and, you know, take over some responsibility on their own. We'll see how it goes.
Kind of what I was wondering.
Okay. Motion to accept that. For Crawford and Associates.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Okay, discussion or approval of changing council meeting time. Brooke, you want to address that?
My understanding, Mayor, is that we have changed the office hours to permanent. I just see you leave from eight to five. Public needs to be made aware of that. To seven thirty to four, I think that was set out on the December water bill. So I think the question was, is would they want to check, or would the council want to entertain possibly changing the council meeting times now to correlate that saying of the one hour after, you know, the closing city hall is something that the council would want to consider from six to five. It may make more sense, because I know that David stays after work, Brooke stays after work, Rachel. It may fit their calendar, it may be more comforting, but at the same time, it may not work for everyone else, but that was something that was discussed here previously, so.
Would the city hall hours were changed, that was to accommodate people being able to come in early before they go to work? Is that correct?
I have a reason for that.
Is that right? I think my concern would be if we did a five o'clock meeting, what would that do the public as far as their availability to be able to come and participate for public comment and having that meeting available to the public?
I agree.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know that we're thinking outside of when people can be here, even though it's a council meeting.
Okay, so...
I love the idea of being earlier, be done earlier, go home earlier, eat dinner earlier.
Yeah, but I think the six o'clock is probably a reasonable time to start the meeting. I agree.
If I could be here, but the thing is, if I'm like you, if we do it at five o'clock, majority of this community commutes to work at least a half an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour, and the earliest a lot of people get off is about, I mean, unless they work in a factory, is about two o'clock, but I mean, the majority of people get off anywhere from four to five. So if you still have that longevity of like the driving of the hour, six o'clock would be ideal, but under that, I mean, I could make it, but, you know, here's the thing, is we're here to represent the people, and the people should be represented by being able to come to the meeting, so I think the six o'clock is still...
So no action on...
Yeah. Unless we want to do like maybe every once in a while, like I know a lot of my organizations will do a summer hour a little bit earlier, just because people do have ballgames in the evening like that, you know, like if we want to do summer council meetings, we can discuss that as time comes. So that's just an idea out there, but I think for now, I think we should just maintain what we have.
Very good. Okay, surfing on to part B, discussion or amendment for the Illinois Video Gaming Act.
Let me take care of that. In your package, just for the public to be aware, there's been some changes. One change of tax already started on July. Basically, the state portion of the net terminal income, it went from thirty percent to thirty-three percent on July first nineteen, and it's going to go from thirty-three percent to thirty-four percent on July first in 2020. The number of big gaming terminals, one can go up, it's a licensed establishment from five to six. Definitely, it's going to happen, but that may be available. There's a new category called licensed large truck stops. They can have up to ten gaming terminals. There is a change now allowing the state fairgrounds, it's specifically called the State Fair Gaming Act. The State Fair at Springfield is allowed to have up to fifty gaming terminals. New Coin will be authorized to have up to thirty gaming terminals. The maximum bets went from two dollars to four dollars, and of course, the limit will go up as well. And then there is also a discussion of animal occasions on this jackpot. Those are just some changes that we need to be made aware of. We maybe have some questions. So that was put in your package, just so you can see the changes in the law, so we don't even take any action at all, but I'm just, I wanted you to be aware of those changes in case you were asked any questions. You would have that just as just a kind of a summary or synopsis.
Thanks, Mayor. Part E, a discussion or approval of the special use permit.
It looks like November fourth, the zoning funding commission held a meeting concerning a special use permit at nine hundred North New Coin Street by Alora Montgomery. She intends to relocate her home business there. It looks like the zoning funding commission unanimously voted to make a recommendation for a special use home occupation permit. So we would like to take some action on that. Mr. Gervallia, is there anything that we need to be made aware of on this, other than what's provided in this memorandum?
That's pretty good. Contest this to an operational order. She's here tonight, want to raise your hand, Lord? She'd like to move to this, I just see that Presbyterian church on North New Coin Street that's been housed down by the door, they moved it forward, I guess, for a while, but not coming back. Apparently, that house has been on the market five, we'll go up to six hundred days, and she's proposing to buy that house and locate her nail business there. She's currently out there in Steel City and lives in a house in another location, and it's a low base area there. That's a five thousand square foot home there, so she can limit her business to seven hundred square feet of it. It's got plenty of good off-street parking. It's close to, if you go across the street, you're in the business though, but on her side of the street, you've got the business engine. Nobody's complained, it was in the newspaper, we had a hearing, it was all positive for her and everything. How long you been in business? About twenty or thirty years, or what is it?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. It's not like a fly-by-night type of operation or anything, but I think it's a great idea. We get her located in business. She's got fine help from all over, Franklin County, outside the county, the whole bit. So I think it should work pretty good.
So we need a motion for a special use permit for home occupation business at nine hundred North New Coin Street.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Part F, a discussion or approval of purchasing for me. A real property for the Frank Santos factory, eight and five eleven. Mr. Reed.
I'd like to address that as a good layer.
Certainly.
County trustee has an auction every year, and it's in October or November, I think it's November before, it might have been in October this year. Where I checked the rolls, every vacant house that's sold for taxes with the county trustee bought was this. Somebody somewhere bought every house in Benton, Illinois that was up for sale, and the county trustee accepts this. I've always taken the position that if it's not been sold by the county trustee, nobody in Benton bought it, nobody in the world bought it, because these are advertised on the internet. I understand after today, there's potential buyers for this house. I'd like to ask this, to just table this for now, and if somebody wants to buy that, that'd be great, because otherwise, we've got to tear it down one way or the other. So we can tear it down and not own it, or we can own it and tear it down. We can't do both. We just can't hold it to let it sit there. I took pictures today, the front's falling in, the back's falling in. The lady there, that's the, got passed, she died, I guess no errors or nothing, and it's been... I know we've voted for three years. It'd be nice if somebody went to buy that in the neighborhood and tear that down and make the yard up and pay taxes. I want to get every opportunity to do that before we get involved. I'd ask that to be taken.
I make a motion.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Okay, any missed money issues? The mayor's from the, our public audience, Tom?
Last council, when they signed a contract with the union employees, they switched the residence requirement from being in the forty-seven school district to countywide. I do not think that that is a good policy for the citizens of Benton. I looked at my tax bill before I came, and over seventy percent of that benefits the citizens of Benton, you know, either through the high school, the grade school, the library, civic center. All this stuff here, it needs to be taken advantage of. If we want a harder citizen from Carbondale, I don't care where, they need to be willing to work and live here. If we want to hire a citizen from Carbondale, I don't care where, they need to be willing to work and live here. If we're paying them, they need to live here. Now, I went thirty-two years living inside the city boundaries. Now, that may be restrictive, but the forty-seven school district boundaries, that would still pay a lot of taxes in here to all our different entities. And I would like for this council to correct that. I know the negotiations are coming up very shortly and that's something that needs to be corrected.
That's our contract to place, so I think that's something you obviously always should be considered.
Well, anyone living in Cessar that would be paying, they're seventy percent, you know, but it's proportional, so it don't matter if you're paying a thousand dollars for your property or ten thousand, it's proportional. But that seventy percent or more is going to be going to Cessar instead of Benton. And we need to utilize everything we can with tight budgets to take care of our own citizens and everything here first.
I just think that most, but the council probably in general agrees with that.
Well, it ended up in the contract, so it needs to be changed back.
I don't know why...
I have to say, I'm not familiar with the previous contract, but the citizen that used the forty-seven school district and not the high school.
They changed it last contract.
So the high school school district would be more encompassing than the...
Well, if you're within that, you're paying for the high school, you're paying for the grade school, you know, you're paying for the library and all that. Somebody in Cessar or Christopher is not. I think that, and I know we can't go back and force them with anybody we already hired. But anybody that's newly hired, starting next year, that contract needs to be changed and they need to live within certain boundaries around here to help pay the taxes, one thing.
Can I say something? I got, police, they don't live in town, they don't even live.
Well, I think if I remember, our policemen are exempt from that because...
That's what I was getting, I say they are, but we, you can ask that gentleman back there, we cannot get nobody from Benton to test on the police department or from out of the area. Now, the fire department, they got so long to move to Benton.
I don't know how their contract is, I mean, how you get caught, get read up on it.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But the other one... Policemen are, they're just, there's no water, there's trees, no, those people, and even all our clerks, I don't know where they are either now. I'm assuming she's still, Brooke, you still live within the grade school district?
We have to live within the grade school district, all of the people that work in the city hall, we don't have to...
That's what I'm saying, I said, everyone that works for the city of Benton should have to live within that boundary.
We can't, we can't, we can't get enough, we don't have nobody from Benton that wants to do this.
Like I said, I think policemen are exempt because...
But I'm just saying, I love, you don't mean, I want to hire people from Benton.
Well, it's not a question of hiring them, if we hire somebody, it doesn't matter if they're from Chicago. If they want to work for the city of Benton, they need to move here, help pay the taxes and support our system.
Like you said, they don't have to. The firemen do.
And while I'm at it, I want to commend you guys for leaving the starting time alone on the city hall. Six o'clock is the optimal time. It used to be seven, that was a bit late, but six is just about right, everybody got a chance to get home and get to the meeting. Even if we have daylight duty time forever.
I have a question for Mr. Story, I don't know if you can answer it, you know, so if you've got the data. But how much Narcan are we running through, say, in a month?
I don't know, I've talked to the chief about that. We don't, I don't think we use a lot, but after one year, all that we bought expired.
Oh, yeah.
We can't use it.
I was just kind of, could you find out for me?
I will, I'll find out tomorrow.
I'll find out the next meeting.
Like the batch we got now.
I'm just curious.
The batch we got now is getting ready to expire. It got sold away.
Yeah.
But I'll find out.
And the fire has their own and the police have their own, so it's a different...
It's different.
You use a different product?
Yeah, the police went to the spray, the fire department puts hers together.
Is that because the fire department is, are they qualified for a different level? Well, not that anyone's more effective, but their training's different than the police officer.
That's what they're trained on, so that's what they use.
But I would be curious to know.
Fire department uses more than a police department. When the fire department gets there, that's where they jump into it. And most everybody that they give that to comes up fighting because you're ruining their high. You know, why I understand you get, first you get an outrageous high on the first time, well, they keep going back and back trying to get it. They don't want to be woke up that early, even though we're dying. You know, they don't know that, but the fire department uses like that.
That, I'll catch it, I'll get it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll find out.
I had a quick one, I'm just curious. About a couple cases of ammo. You know, our police department, thankfully, we don't have any gunfights and waste a bunch of ammo around here. Do they have a certain amount of time they have to shoot their ammo off or get ready to...
They got to, they got to go to the range and qualify two or three times a year. They do, they do running, shooting, taking your gun afar, all that, it's all. They got to do it, what are the marshals doing, how many times a year do they have to?
Every six months.
Every six months.
But to answer his question, ammo is just like anything else, it has to last.
Yeah.
When are the police tests going to expire? Do you buy all those at one time or...
We're good on those right now.
Know how much longer it is?
I remember getting them when I got in here, so.
Typical test would be...
Things are five years, yeah.
Five years.
Three to five years, depending on the...
It should be another, probably four years, no, three years, I'm sorry, thirty years.
Just kind of wondering.
Yeah. And we got to dig heavy ones, not the...
Anybody else?
Nine fifteen, Friday.
I can work it too.
No, we want to turn nine fifteen Friday morning.
I'll just sit here till... Go if you're cold.